Welcome to the January 15, 2013 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by City Clerk Artie Kasakian. Please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Almost exactly a month ago to this day, in one of the most horrific acts of violence in our nation's history, twenty young children and six adults were massacred while at school in Newtown, Connecticut. As a city, we are gathered for our first official meeting since that tragedy, and so I'd like to ask that before we pray, we observe a brief moment of silence for the innocent lives lost. On April 4, 1968, just five years after losing his brother to an assassin's bullet in Dallas, Texas, Senator Robert F. Kennedy tried to comfort a nation reeling from the murder of the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., also a victim of a cowardly assassin's bullet. In words that only a person who had experienced deep personal loss could, Robert Kennedy tried to give some solace to America by reminding them that as a people, we are better than those who use violent acts to intimidate and terrorize. To the grieving and shocked nation, he recited the following passage from the Greek poet Aeschylus: "Even in our sleep, pain which cannot forget falls drop by drop upon the heart, until in our own despair against our will comes wisdom through the awful grace of God." Kennedy had faith in the better nature of his fellow Americans, and on that April night, he used us, he urged us by quote, "to dedicate ourselves to what the Greeks wrote so many years ago, to tame the savageness of man and make gentle the life of this world. Let us dedicate ourselves to that," he said, "and say a prayer for our country and for our people." He himself would die of a gunshot only two months after his speech, right here in Los Angeles. Tonight, let us heed his call and honor the memory of all those who have lost their lives to gun violence by dedicating ourselves to taming our savageness and working to leave this earth better, more peaceful place, and full of more kindness and joy than when we came into it. We pray for our city of Glendale and its families, the families of Newtown, Connecticut, and above all, for peace tonight and forever. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the January 15, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 10, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Under Presentation and Appointments, at 3:00 A. is the Agenda Preview for the Meetings of January 22, 2013.
Mr. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for January 22, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have known business agenda items. That evening for the Glendale City Council Meeting, we have a number of items under consent. Director of Public Works, approval of the final map of tract number 71786, which is a four-unit new condo subdivision at 432 Myrtle Street, and that is under consent. We have Director of Public Works, this is regarding the Acacia Avenue Wastewater Capacity and Street Improvements Project, and this is in connection with spec number 3045R. Director of Public Works regarding I-5 SR-134 Congestion Management Project. We also have Director of Public Works and General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding the Canyatta Boulevard Infrastructure Improvement Projects. Under Adoption of Ordinances, we have adoption restricting the use of plastic carryout bags and imposing a 10 cent charge on recycling paper bags, if it's to be introduced this evening. Ordinance for Adoption Amending the Zone Map of Property Located at 313 through 315 West California Avenue. Under Action Items, we have three items. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an amendment to the city's standard multi-tenant office lease agreement with 512 Wilson, as well as General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Administrative Services, Finance, this is regarding proposed ordinance authorizing issuance of Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2013 Refunding Series. And lastly, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is regarding authorization to use funds from GWP's cash reserves for the water utility to fund capital projects. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Beers. Next.
3B is proclamation designating January 13, 2013, as the 10th anniversary of Korean American Day.
Okay, are there representatives? Stephen, please come to the podium, and I'll read the proclamation. It reads as follows: "We're asked Glendale and its adjacent cities are home to approximately 700,000 Korean-Americans, the largest concentration of Koreans outside of the Korean Peninsula. The history of Korean immigration to America began as 102 courageous Korean men, women, and children ventured across the Pacific Ocean to land in Hawaii on January 13, 1903. They did not falter in their pursuit of the American dream, and through tenacious effort and sacrifice, established a new home and a new land, and educated their Korean-American children. The first Korean immigrants fought for the freedom and independence of their motherland, which was invaded by the Japanese Empire. Their children grew up to be patriotic American citizens, served in the armed forces of the United States during the Second World War," and it doesn't mention it, "but also in the Korean War, Vietnam War, and all of the wars since. They made other important contributions to mainstream America. In search of better opportunities for their children, beginning in the 1970s, a multitude of dynamic Koreans joined the increasing flow of immigration to the United States. And with diligence, fortitude, and a strong belief in the American dream, these immigrants turned depressed areas into thriving communities and raised their children as productive Korean-Americans. Whereas the community enters a new era and creates a new history, we must instill in the upcoming generations proper appreciation for their courage and value of their ancestors, a deep sense of their roots and pride in their own cultural heritage, so that they may better contribute to this great nation, rich with ethnic and cultural diversity. Therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim January 13, 2013, as the 10th anniversary of Korean American Day." Thank you very much, sir.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Vincent Kim. I'm the Korean-American Foundation of Los Angeles Chapter President. Korean-American Foundation actually as the name itself laid foundation and groundwork for the Korean American Day, passed a resolution in 2004 in California State Assembly and the Senate. Also, next year, 2005, we had the Korean-American Resolution passed again in the National Congress of the United States and the Senate. So since then, we've been celebrating the Korean American Day. And today, I mean, this year marks the 110th year of the first Koreans immigrate to this country, actually in Hawaii. They arrived there, but it marks the 110th year of Korean immigrant history. And also, it's the 10th anniversary of the Korean American Day, passed the resolution at the California State Assembly and the Senate. So this year is a significant year, and also giving us a significant effect to the Koreans to celebrate for Korean American Day for. And another meaning for the Korean American Day is Korean American Day is made in this country by the people because Koreans worked hard, they contributed this country in many ways. So the Korean American Day itself is not to be celebrated, not only Koreans, but also to all the minorities who contributed to this society and this country. So I think in there, there is a great meaning of the Korean American Day. And finally, I'd like to thank the Mayor Frank Quintero and all the council members, giving us an opportunity of the proclamation of a Korean American Day today. Thank you so much, and thank you, City of Glendale.
Thank you, sir.[637.41][637.41](APPLAUSE). Before we go to the next item, I'd like to call up Jack Ivey, who is the new president of Glendale Memorial. However, he's a old hand here in Glendale. He's served here from '80 to '92, so he's here for a number of years, and was the Vice President of Operations at the hospital at the time. And in his press release, I think the Chair of the Board of Directors, Pat Lydell, hit it on the head. He said, "Jack Ivey has been an invaluable contributor to efficient operations and successful development of programs and services throughout his tenure with Dignity Health," which is the old Catholic healthcare West. "We are very pleased and confident he will bring strong leadership and an innovative vision to our team at Glendale Memorial." It then goes on to talk about all of the years that he's spent in healthcare. And anyway, it's quite extensive. He's done lots of work in all over Southern California. We're very, very happy to have him back in Glendale. And let me add that Glendale has been recognized as in a select group of 100 hospitals nationwide that made the most progress implementing hospital performance standards over the past five years. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, for the introduction, and thanks, council members, just letting me here for a few minutes. This is like a homecoming for me, because I was Vice President of Operations from 1980 to '92, but more importantly than that, all four of our children were born at Glendale Memorial, and my wife was a nurse there for 25 years. So we have a real personal connection to the community. It's ironic, I come back after 20 years, but probably more important than my personal story is hospitals in communities right now, and they're usually the biggest employers, but probably the mission of hospitals that they're taking care of people who are at that most vulnerable stage of life. And that's my goal here, is to continue that long-term mission at Glendale Memorial since they've been here since 1926, and that's got critically important. And I look forward to really connecting with members of the community as I get more visible. I've been there full-time since December, and as we start a new year, I'll get more involved in community activities, cross paths with a lot of the members of the council here too, but thank you for the invitation tonight.
Thank you. Welcome back. Welcome back.[794.31][794.31](APPLAUSE). Okay, we're going to have City Council and staff comments. Before we do, we have pulled 8D from the agenda. If there's anyone here who... 8D was the Director of Community Development, an update on distance requirements, smoking in outdoor areas, et cetera, and that's been pulled from the calendar, so we won't be discussing it this evening. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Next, the City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman.
First, it's good to be back after our little holiday. So over the holidays, I had the chance to talk to someone that's well-known to many people in Glendale, and that's Mr. Mike Morgan, who is very much a historian of all things Glendale, particularly the north part of the city, but all about Glendale. And for years, he's been amassing collections of memorabilia about the history of our city. And he's been collecting this in hopes of one day having a Glendale History Museum, which would be wonderful and a great goal, but the two of us decided that in the interim, that maybe there was a solution of having some of this memorabilia displayed in the city, and that's right here in our own City Hall. Walking through our beautifully restored lobby every day, it occurred to me that we've got lots of blank walls down there that could easily have showcases where we would have revolving displays about Glendale's past. It wouldn't have to just be open to Mike's collection, but we could certainly open it up to other groups who also wanted to put displays down there, but I wanted to ask council, and I'm not sure if this is something that council has to decide, but I wanted to see if there was support for asking the city to install these sorts of cases, which I'm sure we have lying around somewhere, even in the library, and allowing Mike maybe to start the ball rolling. And I've spoken to him, and he's very willing to do this, and I think it'd be a great way to show people a little bit of Glendale as they walk through City Hall. So is anybody on board?
Yeah, sure.
Great.
Can we display them in the gate program?
Well, the gate program is, you know, it's art, and we've hired this contractor to go out and bring artisans, so I think it's really a different thing, but I think that, you know, here in City Hall is a very appropriate place to have displays about the city of Glendale, so I think it'd be certainly a good start.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manukian.
Thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and welcome everyone to the chambers. I would also like to request to place the issue of gun sales on city property on next week's agenda.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank about 1,000 students and adults that worked on the Glendale Rose Float in December. Without their help, of course, it wouldn't have been done. We had approximately 41 schools represented this year. Since we're on the Internet, we've been able to get schools from all over, like Alhambra, Wilson High, Notre Dame High, Rio Hondo Cathedral, San Marino, Flintridge Prep, Marshall, Van Nuys, all over. Kids got their community service hours. I'll tell you, we needed all that help. We didn't finish till 11:00 P.M. on the night before the judging. All the floral that you saw had to go on in one day. That necessitated a lot of workers putting in long hours, so I'm very proud of the kids that did it. I just had to kind of stand around and direct it, and I seldom ever, I didn't even get on the float. I just directed. They won't let me on the float, I'm too old now. So if young kids do it, I'm grateful to all of them, and I'll be getting word out personally to all of them. And hope next year for our 100th that we'll have even more kids turning out, because I know we'll have an even better float next year. I do tell people, I don't know if that float picture is ready. There it is. I like to tell people, the city of L.A. won the Mayor's Trophy, but Glendale won the Governor's Trophy. It won Upton on one thing. So it's the best depiction of life in California. Each pod that you see, those cylinders, had about 2,500 flowers on each top, and those cylinders took the most work, took days. The last cylinder was finished a little after 10:00 P.M. on the 30th. People don't realize how much detail work goes into them. I'm very proud of all the kids who made it happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm going to add that I gave Mr. Weaver moral support one particular evening on a very cold night. I attended multiple nonprofit events, but I'll wait till the next meeting to talk about it. Any comments from the staff? No. Okay, for those of you in the audience that are here on the gun show issue, will we do it next week or in the next couple of weeks at a certain point?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Manukian's request was to bring it back next week, and that was what we had indicated.
For discussion.
For discussion. So that's when the discussion...
Okay, so that means next week is when we'll actually be discussing the issue. Okay, nothing from the staff. Next, please.
Thanks for our time.
You want to tell them they can speak?
Yeah, now, if you want to, if you want to, quiet. If you want to speak tonight at the end of this agenda, you can speak on oral communication. That won't be the agenda item, but you can stay and speak on oral communication. But next week is when we will discuss it. Mayor, I think the NRA website misrepresented saying we would discuss it tonight. Tonight is the night that it was asked to be put on the agenda, so we weren't misleading anybody. The website had it wrong. Okay, next.
Next is a Consent Calendar, including minutes. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have a...
Move the Consent Calendar five seconds.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, next, please.
Next, as listed on the agenda, is Oral Communications. However, per our custom, this is a portion that we reserve for three-minute community announcements. The full five-minute portion of oral communications, we will revisit at the conclusion of city business this evening.
Okay, Ron Farina, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Senior Management Staff of the City. My name's Ron Farina. I'm here from the American Red Cross Glendale Chrysanthemum Valley Chapter, also representing the Glendale Kiwanis Club tonight. My purpose tonight is to invite the entire community, the city council, those present, to participate in the biannual Kiwanis Blood Drive. It's occurring on Friday, January 25. It's going to be from 10:00 to 4:00 P.M., 10:00 A.M. to 4:00 P.M. at the Elks Lodge, 120 East Colorado Boulevard. We do this twice a year, usually in January and in August. If you're 17 and over and good health, you can donate. Blood is needed always in this community. Red Cross provides blood for about half of the hospitals in the L.A. County area, but especially now, the type O negative and type B negative are both needed urgently, so this is more of an urgent appeal to come out and donate if you're one of those blood types. You know, patients receive blood and they receive platelets for different reasons. Sometimes it's a premature baby, a family member with cancer, or a friend involved in a car accident. So blood should be there when it's needed, and if it's not needed, then someone goes without. So let me repeat the invitation again. Everyone's welcome. You can sign up by going to redcrossblood.org, entering the code KIwanISGLendale, and you can register online and have an appointment, but walk-ups are eligible as well. All donors are going to be receiving a Cold Stone Creamery certificate for a creation, a free creation. I know that got your attention, got my attention right away. So please come out if you can, appreciate the support, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Chiara Liban-Danian.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Forensic Glendale Public Library, and we're looking forward to presenting the community with another year of famous and well-known authors who will contribute to our program. All our program's information is available at the library. Our membership applications are available at the library. Now, Montrose is having its 100th anniversary starting next month, and we're going to have two authors well-known in Montrose and La Crisana circles. Robert Nukem, who's going to talk on Wednesday, January 23rd. He's a co-author of Images of America, La Crisana, Then and Now. And then on the February 20th, Art Coburn, who was a teacher in Burbank for years and years and lived in the area, Montrose area, and he's written a book called The Great Chrysanthemum Valley Flood. So there's two events, very interesting. I'm going to, rather than go to the audience who have important things on their mind, and I'm going to be short, so there'll be plenty of time for the people who are here tonight to talk about an important issue to talk. So I'll try to keep my remarks quick and short, and I'll put these flyers in the back. Now, we have a treat on January 30th, again, 7 o'clock, Central Library. All our events are at the Central Library. There's no admission. You get your validated parking for three hours at the parking structure opposite the library. So we're going to have a program called The Beer Chicks, Wednesday, January 30th. These are the two ladies who've become famous for, I don't know if it's homemade beer or just how they make their beer, but you'll find out all about it in due course, and that's Wednesday, January 30th. They've written a book about making beer. They're nationally known at this time, and so I'll end my remarks with that, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Chiara Liberidian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and members of the community. My name is Chiara Liberidian, and I'm a member of the Armenian Relief Society, Western Region, whose headquarters is located here in Glendale. Today, I'm here to invite you all to attend the Second Annual Three-Day Winter Wonderland Festival. Last year, we brought real snow to the children of Glendale, and this year, we'll be bringing twice the amount of snow, so that parents can enjoy the snow rides with their children, and twice the amount of rides for the entire family's enjoyment. The proceeds from our fundraising help countries with major emergencies, as well as running Saturday schools in California. We also have social service offices in Glendale, Pasadena, Hollywood, and Burbank. Next, you'll see a clip of how the public enjoyed last year's festival.
Come and enjoy the ARS Winter Wonderland Three-Day Festival. It'll take place Friday, January 25 through Sunday, January 27, on the grounds of St. Mary's Church at 500 North Central Avenue in Glendale. A chance to play in real snow and rides and games for all ages, great food and entertainment. Admission is $3. For more details, call 818-500-1343. Come and have a great time. See you there.
There's going to be great food, music, and activities for all ages. The dates are from Friday, January 25 through Sunday, January 27, and the times are as follows: Friday from 4:00 to 10:00 P.M., Saturday from 11:00 A.M. to 11:00 P.M., and Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00 P.M. Last year, we had 6,000 people attend, so it was a really great turnout. In terms of parking, there will be valley parking, and some of the neighboring businesses will also have parking available. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, under Action Items, at 8A is Director of Community Services and Parks, regarding lease renewal of the Verdugo Job Center. At 8A1 is a motion approving a five-year lease renewal as approved and recommended by the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board in authorizing execution of necessary contracts.
Motion. Yes, I'll move 8A1. Second. Okay, so the public knows it's basically the same location that the Job Center has been in for many years, a more favorable lease rate, and everything remains the same thanks to good work by Don Nakamoto and all the rest of the board. Anyway, not too much discussion on this, I don't think. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
8B is City Attorney regarding options for council consideration and preparing arguments for or against measures A, B, and C. B1 is a motion approving council's directions to draft arguments in favor of measure A, B, and C, and appointing drafters of arguments against measures A, B, and C.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that and before you is to appoint the people to write the arguments in favor and against measures A, B, and C. Glendale Miss Pecota has a procedure for selecting people in terms of giving them the order of preference, with one being officers, elected officers of the city, then appointed officers, then, in the case of the city, the next one is bona fide association of citizens, and then the last, it will be individual voters. So for measure, measure A, Councilmember Weaver, the report indicates that Councilmember Weaver indicated that he wanted to write the argument in favor, and actually, his request was that he and Mr. Baruki write that argument. his request was that he and Mr. Baruki write that argument. For the argument against measure A, Councilmember Manukian has requested to submit that argument, and under the Glendale Missip Code, the council has to appoint him because he's an elected officer, and so he's first up on the list. With respect to the argument in favor of measure B, the majority of the council can write that argument, and again, direct, direct our office to draft that and then bring it back to the majority for discussion and approval. And then, alternative two, if the council doesn't want to write it, then the no argument will be written. For measure B, the against argument, Vanguardians, Inc. has submitted to write that particular argument. They are a 501(c)(3) with valid current status as a 501(c)(3), and as we've interpreted in the past, that is sufficient to be deemed a bona fide association of citizens. And so the recommendation is to appoint them. Mr. Harry Zavos also requested to write that argument, but Vanguardians is first in line under our ordinance. And then with respect to measure C, again, the council could direct that a majority of the council write that argument and direct our office to actually draft it. And then with respect to argument C, nobody has submitted to write that argument except for Vanguardians, Inc., and so the council would have to select them under our procedures under the ordinance. The arguments for and against are due on January 25th and have to be 300 words or less. So with that...
Many words?
300 words or less.
Can I buy a vowel?
Unfortunately, no.
So the arguments for, B, and C, since there is no one, would you say who writes it?
Well, the council. Then, so the recommendation, as we've done with others, is that the council would sign it.
Staff?
Staff would draft it and then present it to the majority of the council to review and approve it. And then, measure B and C, Vanguardians is the entity that would write that particular, the no on those two particular measures.
Since Vanguardians publisher owner doesn't live in Glendale, they can still write it from, even though they're resident of another city?
Councilmember Weaver, our interpretation has been yes, because they're, it doesn't require that they reside in the city, just requires that they be a bona fide association of citizens in Glendale. And we've, because they address issues primarily focused on Glendale, our interpretation has been that they're entitled to write that argument.
Titled, but do we have to allow them?
In my view, yes. That's, that's, who submit, that's the only entity that submitted, and a bona fide association does have that right.
Basically right, by default, since no one else...
Nobody, because nobody else submitted.
Interested, and they, by default.
Couple of questions. When you say association of citizens, that, I think that is a particular legal term. A 501(c)(3) is not by definition an association of citizens. It is a, an organization, a nonprofit organization. Organization of citizens, in my mind, is something different, like a homeowners' association or a taxpayers' association or something like that. So why are you, why are you accepting a 501(c)(3) to be, following the definition of an association of citizens?
Councilman Najarian, partly because the definition in our code is not precise, and we have in the past, again, basically agreed that Vanguardians was a bona fide association of citizens with respect to, I think it was measure U on the UUT back in 2009. So I have, I have a very difficult time finding that this is different, even though Mr. Allen Mayor may not reside within city limits.
Well, let me just continue on that. The fact that we recognize them in 19, in 2006 or 2009, whenever that was, certainly I don't think is precedent. And if I remember correctly, this organization has resisted attempts to disclose any membership that would qualify it as an association of citizens. It could be, and when you say citizens, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of definitions in there. What if I want to write the argument against B and C? Am I permitted?
Yes.
Who would check, and who would, you know, who would verify the argument that I make is appropriately presenting the issues against B and C?
What if you made a very weak argument?
Well, the standard is, the argument, these arguments, both for and against, they will obviously, they're going to have political and policy arguments. The only, the only way that these arguments can be challenged, and the only way they can be challenged is in court by writ of mandate proceeding, and the only way they can be challenged is if they are determined by clear and convincing evidence that they are false, misleading, or that, that it'll interrupt the process of getting these, these arguments printed on the ballot. So it's a little bit slightly higher standard, but it's not, it's not, there are cases upholding these things being stricken.
Did the representative from this organization know that we were dealing with this today?
I assume so.
Is anyone in the audience from this organization here willing to stand up and speak for the organization?
I actually have a question. Was this, was this presented to the public? I mean, this is, first I heard that you had to go to the city clerk's office, and there may be some organizations.
It's been advertised. We indicated when we had the council approve these ballot measures, we indicated then what the deadline would be, and then, and then, as Mr. Kasaki notes, we've, it's been advertised on our website and other, other mediums.
So even, or even if all five of us didn't want it?
I'll call you when it's time for...
Okay, just want to make sure. If all five of us don't want that association to write it, we can't stop it.
Well, I mean, it takes an action to approve it, so my recommendation is that you approve them, but I certainly understand your argument, and I think that's, it's a credible one. And if at the end of the day you don't choose them, then we would, and we get challenged, we'd have to fight. But I, my recommendation is, more likely than not, we'd, we would have to recognize them as, as the bona fide association.
And the reason I raise this is not because I have any animosity towards this citizens, what's it called, association of citizens? None at all. But in fact, there are far better representatives who have been before council, far more eloquent, who, individuals, law professors, et cetera, who are being squeezed out of this process because the Vanguardians group wants to take over.
Correct. I agree, and I...
I mean, in some, some regards, I see that as a disservice to the citizens, and we're talking about Harry Zavos.
Right.
Who last night presented, and who actually was the standard bearer, the flag bearer for these issues, this and, and the water transfer and all these other things. It seems unfair that he is frozen out of this because some group may want it for, let's say for publicity's sake or for, for gain in some other manner.
I thought, I thought Harry Zavos' name was in there as well.
He did request to, to write it, so if, if, but he's next after Vanguardians. So if Vanguardians had either withdrawn or the council chooses not to pick them, then they could, then the next in line would be Mr. Zavos.
I assume there would be collaboration between those parties writing it?
I think a law professor is a better choice.
Can we just pick the law professor and bypass the...
Again, if you do so, there's some risk that it's subject to challenge, because there will be an argument that Vanguardians is due. But again, it's better than not picking anyone, because Mr. Zavos is on the list, and it comes after Vanguardians.
There is also the issue of measures A, B, and C. Mr. Zavos has requested to write the arguments against only B.
Correct.
So you still have A and C.
So C has no takers except the...
Except for Vanguardians, including A.
No.
Yeah, Vanguardians request on all three.
The issue is where, where, I understand, I understand the concern that council members have, but where, where, where do you stop when you're, when you're dealing with issues such as, at this point, I see this as an issue of freedom of speech actually, and if, if there are, if they're meeting the standards that were set before we even started in this process, and they meet those standards, I believe for us to kind of, away with the standards and pick whoever we want, who says in the future we can't, you know, select someone that we like or we don't like? Is it based on who were, as council members, familiar or comfortable with, to write arguments for or against a specific measure, forgetting this issue itself, but on the overall approach of...
Correct. I think the only, the only time that discretion comes in is if, for example, you have two people in the same category, let's say there was two council members that wanted to write the argument, then...
If there were two organizations that were 501(c)(3), we could pick.
Correct.
Mr. Garcia, Vanguard, Vanguardians, as they call themselves, now claims to be a 501(c)(3). Does being a 501(c)(3) preclude them from writing a ballot statement? I thought 501(c)(3)'s cannot engage in politics.
That's a very interesting question. I've always, it's always been my personal view, but that's not something that, that I can enforce, or, you know, if they, if they choose to take that risk to write that argument, then that's the risk that they run.
Right, that's their risk, but I just want to find out, so your understanding of what a 501(c)(3) is, you would assume that they would not ethically be writing ballot propositions, being, being tax exempt?
You know, I, I don't profess to be an expert in this area when it deals with the nonprofit status. The argument that's made on the other side, Councilmember Friedman, is that their requirement to be nonpartisan as a nonprofit just means you, regarding party affiliation, and their argument here is that they're a civic organization. Obviously, they, you know, I think the record's pretty clear, they've taken positions politically that seem hard to defend, but again, we, that wouldn't be something that we would enforce. We could, if the council picks them to write the argument, then that's something that they might, may or may not have to answer to the IRS for. But I, I, that's the exact same thing that first popped in my head when I saw their name.
Well, let me say this, that Professor Zavos has taught law for many years. He has made himself an expert on water and utility funds. I mean, he's been in front of us countless times, preparing legal briefs, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea that he can't come up with an argument against a measure, I think he is more than adequate, way more adequate than, than this Vanguardians. I mean, to call it a bona fide association of citizens, that's a stretch. That's a complete stretch. So as far as I'm concerned, I'd go with the professor who's clearly against measure B.
And has been the spokesperson.
Yeah, and has basically been the spokesperson, I guess as recently as last night at a forum.
Yeah, and what would you do with C? And then...
Well, C, if no one else...
If there's no one else.
A and C.
No, A is...
A is Councilmember Manukian.
What?
It's me, A.
Oh, oh.
Right. Measure, measure B, Mr. Zavos was interested in, in going against the...
I, I agree with you, but I don't, if you have discretion, I think Mr. Zavos would be the perfect candidate.
Right. The question becomes if they are bona fide association of citizens, then you have to pick them. My concern is not picking them, there's, there's, we're subject to challenge. I understand the point that Mr. Najarian and the mayor are making. I think that's actually a very credible argument. It's just, you know, based on our past practice, I don't, you know, I just have to advise you of the risk, and then you can, you can go forward and make your decision.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Let me just go through, since, I don't know if there's more discussion. So with respect to alternative one, I'm, I'm sorry, with respect to measure A, the for argument, it could either be the council, it could be Mr. Weaver, or Mr. Weaver and Mr. Baruki, or, you know, I'm not sure if...
I want to withdraw and let Mr. Baruki write.
Okay, and, and the council can, since Mr. Baruki is an elected official of the city, he can write the for, the council can, can assign him to write the for argument, or the council can decide to do it for itself.
Sorry, you were withdrawing what?
My name...
You were withdrawing your name?
Because when Ron Baruki and I sent the email to Mr. Kasaki, and we said joint, thinking best of it, I think I...
But his name's not here, that's why.
Yeah.
That was the mayor on our part.
So I thought it best for me to just step back and let the professional, the person that knows the best to write it. It's nonpolitical, gets me out of the picture.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm in favor of stuff, actually. You're adding the, the arguments in favor.
Well...
Our city attorney, actually, so...
Okay, well, my, my recommendation is that it be one of the elected officials or the officer that signs it. We, our role here, we do draft them when the council selects themselves to write the argument, so it's certainly up to the, to the council. I tell you, as a, as a member who's appointed by you, I don't feel comfortable writing and signing, I wouldn't want to sign an argument for or against any of these measures. That's not our role. We certainly help you with the drafting. That's, that is our role.
Bing?
Let me just add one question since we were on it. My understanding is that with regard to the 501(c)(3), partisan involvement means campaigning for or against a particular individual for public office.
Right.
Not ballot.
Not to be confused with the diatribe in his nuclear, in his weekly newsletter, which is for or against a particular candidate or candidates. Don't, don't worry about that, that, we don't count that. Well, someone is looking into it.
Thinking of looking at those newsletters, I mean, they, a lot of times, they try to make the, strike the line between, you know, expressly advocating for or against by, you know, writing in a certain way, but they, they do try to strike that line, at least it appears to me.
So how is a motion made here?
We have a motion for you. Don't...
Before we get to that point, I have one speaker, Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. I'd like to talk about B, the GWP charter change. I know you've talked about Vanguard. I'd like to talk about the people's, people's lawyer, Harry Zavos. Many in the community know about Harry. Many know him as a fair-minded individual. In fact, last night at the Glendale Home Motor Coordinating Council, he was the spokesperson against the charter change, and he debated our city attorney, Mr. Mike Garcia.
It's not a debate, Mr. Mohill.
Well, we call it a discussion, okay? He was very lit, he was very fluid, and his argument for, I should say, against the charter change. If there's anybody who I think is well-versed in this subject matter, would be the people's attorney, Professor Harry Zavos. Thank you.
Bing?
I would, I would say, talk to your friend, Mr. Allen, and ask him to remove his request.
I think it's Mr. Silverman.
Oh.
That's his legal name, that's his real name.
I'm not in disagreement with you, Mr. Mohill, and that's...
But they're not here.
But unfortunately, they're not here. We could have had a discussion and perhaps urged him to let the people's, what did you call him, the people's attorney. That doesn't mean he's doing free work for anyone, so don't knock his door down, but we can't address that, and we are bound by the, we are bound by the statute, which gives priority to certain organizations over individuals, so...
Can I nominate Ron Baruki for the positive on measure A?
Do we need to take these individually?
You can take them individually, or you can take them all.
Let's just do that, let's take them individually.
Do you want to do the con at the same time? Get it done?
What if we disagree?
I don't think we're going to disagree.
No, the pro, no, the pro and con, the con would be...
Con, right. Okay. I don't care.
Okay, second.
So that's your nomination?
So the motion is for Mr. Baruki.
And this one is against. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. All right, now, measure B.
Well, I think we need to follow the staff, we have a charter dictated procedure for how this is done, so Vanguardians pushes out Mr. Zavos, so I'm going to nominate Vanguardians for measure B and...
And C at this point.
B and C.
That's the...
Against.
The argument's against.
Against, yeah. And four?
Can I make one suggestion, or just, just another, another idea, given that Mr. Allen is not here, the representative of Vanguardians, you could also, the deadline to, for this is Thursday, you could appoint Mr. or Vanguardians to write the no arguments, but if, if Mr. Allen between now and Thursday notifies us that he withdraws, then...
No, let's just go ahead. I mean, they put this in, let's just get this done.
So let me ask this question now. How much research have we done in terms of this issue as it pertains to 501(c)(3), et cetera, et cetera?
Which issue, the partisan issue or the...
Yeah, the partisan issue.
Again, I think Mr. Najarian has stated the correct legal standard of if you're advocating for or against a, the election or an election of a candidate. So it's very specific to candidates.
So I have a motion.
Second.
B and C, but for staff, that's argument four.
In favor, staff will write.
So, yeah, just so that we're clear, we will, staff will draft it, it'll be, it'll be the, it'll be the, the argument that the majority of the council would then sign on to.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman--
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
No. Okay, the motion carries. Next.
H.C. is Director of Public Works regarding restricting the use of plastic carryout bags and imposing a 10-cent charge on recyclable paper bags. C1 is Resolution Adopting an Addendum to the Final EIR, Making Certain Findings and Determinations and Adopting a Statement of Overriding Considerations. C2 is an Ordinance for Introduction.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, this, we have a brief presentation for you, as this is somewhat familiar territory. This is a program that was enacted at the county level, and is something now that is migrating its way down to a number of cities, and Glendale at this point is considering it. Basically, what we're talking about is the prohibition of plastic single-use disposable bags and the charging of a fee for paper bags. And with that, we'll have our Public Works Director, Mr. Zern, walk you through the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in November 2010, the County of Los Angeles passed a ban, an ordinance banning the use of plastic bags in specified retail and grocery-type establishments. With that, they also certified and adopted an environmental impact report that was countywide that covered this particular action. The impetus for their measure was the negative impacts that come from the issuance of over 6 billion plastic bags per year in the County of Los Angeles, primarily litter that finds its way into a number of locations, road sides, highways, and the other, with the growing concern over our stormwater management program, is these bags getting into the catch basin and stormwater conveyance system, and eventually finding their way to the Pacific Ocean and the surrounding marshlands, which has negative impacts to the marine and wildlife there. That was the basis for their putting this ordinance in place. In October, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, October 2011, the city council directed us to draft an ordinance along the lines of the county ordinance, and to also proceed with processing an addendum to the countywide environmental impact report, so that we could consider adopting that same type of van on the plastic bags here in Glendale. Based on the county's calculation of 600 bags per person, that 6 billion bags per year in the county translates to about 116 billion bags per year in Glendale that are issued.
Say that again, 116--
116 million in Glendale, which is our piece of the 6 billion bags that are issued annually in the County of Los Angeles. This ban focuses primarily on grocery stores, supermarkets, convenience stores, pharmacies, and drugstores. As you may recall in our previous discussion, the ordinance exempts food establishments, fast-food establishments, and restaurants. We proceeded with retaining the services of Sapphoz Environmental to complete the addendum to the EIR. For us, Sapphoz is also the firm that completed the county EIR as well, and Mr. Roland Oak is here from Sapphoz, who, depending on your will or desire, I can have him go through briefly the addendum, compilation process. Otherwise, we are happy to entertain any type of questions you have between myself and Mr. Oak. We can talk about--
Is that why we have 1,600 pages of document?
Yes. I didn't think you'd want us to go through all 1,600 pages. Certainly, Mr. Oak, and this is a question I have, is that previously, there were five questions that the council asked in relation to the EIR, and whether or not we could deviate from what was in the county EIR. And Mr. Oak has looked at those and has responses to those, so if you'd like, I can have him at least narrow it down to responding to those five questions. If you recall, there was a question about, in the countywide ordinance, it includes a 10-cent charge for paper bags. And so, as a consumer comes into a retail establishment, the plastic bags are banned, the encouragement is for the individual to have reusable bags, to use the reusable bags. If they choose not to do that, they do have the option of a recycled paper bag with a charge of 10 cents per bag. There was a question amongst council of whether that could be 5 cents, and that's something Mr. Oak can certainly comment on. There are a couple of exemptions in this, so individuals participating in the Women, Infants, and Children's Food Supplement Program, or the General Food Supplement Program, are exempt under the county ordinance. We would propose adopting that same policy. The one difference where we deviate a bit from the county is we have included events that are on city property, farmers' markets, or any city-sponsored event. And our reasoning there is, as the city who's either sponsoring it or having an event on city property, we should set the example. If we're asking others to do it, we should set that example as well. I think all of you have received a letter from the grocers, California Grocers Association, who are supporting this particular item. They have in the past indicated that they prefer the 10-cent charge. I will tell you simply that it's the continuity issue for them, as they represent grocery stores across cities and counties. They are striving to have a uniform type of a policy in place, so that it's easier for them to implement that. In Glendale, or under the ordinance, or what we're proposing would be a two-phase implementation plan. We would have first, the larger stores. These are stores of primarily, again, grocery and supermarket stores, $2 million a year or more in gross sales, or 10,000 square feet of retail space. And we use the North American industry system classification codes for those systems as per the county ordinance. The second would be all the remaining stores that fall into those NAICS codes, small pharmacies, small grocery stores, small convenience markets. Those we would put in place in what we call Phase 2. So, what we're looking at is, first six months, we go for the larger stores, and then, within 12 months, we will have all of the stores online. In Glendale, just as information, the total number of stores that would be affected by this particular ordinance would be 164.
The total number of stores?
Total number of stores, it would be 164, according to the coding system that we have, and that would be broken out into 58 would be the Phase 1 larger stores, the remaining 106 would be the smaller establishments.
The charge for the bags, the 10-cent charge?
Correct.
That is a charge that is charged by the vendor to the shopper, and the vendor will keep that charge, right?
Correct.
It's not something that is being charged and being paid to the city for any reason?
That's correct. The retail establishment will keep the money and--
They can choose not to charge?
Ostensibly, no, the ordinance will require them to charge for the recycled paper bag. They can--
How can we force them to charge an additional, you know, 10 cents?
Same way they charge for bottles, charge a recycle fee on bottles.
Police power, we're essentially, it's partly--
But he's going to collect and he's going to keep it, it's for himself, it's not for--
It's got specific, in the ordinance, there's specific purposes for which she has to use it, he or she has to use it.
It was, it's to be used for promotion and education, or actually to offset the cost of the paper bags.
Okay.
And I will give you a little information, because the county's been, the county's large store, the Phase 1, if you will, has been in place for a full year, July 11 to July 12. They're estimating, they had complete participation, they didn't talk about any of their infractions, but they say there's very, very few of those, because there's been a great deal of cooperation in this, zero plastic bags. They've reduced overall paper bag distribution by about 30%. On average, a store will collect, in the neighborhood, of $6,400. And that money then is, the store is to use that again for promotional purposes, to advertise the recycling and paper bag, or reusable bag usage, and possibly to offset the cost of the paper bags. I will tell you, just from a legal standpoint, because this, I believe this question came up last time, the EIR has not been challenged legally. However, the county was challenged by one of the plastics industry for the 10-cent charge, under a violation of Proposition 26. And the Superior Courts ruled against the plastics industry and for the county. Because that 10-cent charge, exactly what you were referring to, Mr. Menucha, and that 10 cents, or the proceeds from that charge, go to the store, not to the county, or the city, or whatever agency, public agencies, so it is not tantamount to a tax. It is, in essence, a charge by the retailer, who then has requirements on what the--
That's what does it make, it's kind of odd, actually, that you're going to say, you're going to collect that money and you're going to keep it too.
It's to be used for specific purposes.
Ms. Najarian.
Just to follow on Mr. Menucha's line there, one of my favorite shopping days up at the Do-It Center is when they have a tax-free day, where they don't charge you the sales tax. They're actually remitting the sales tax to the government, but they're not charging the consumer that. Are you saying that a grocery store, in an effort to gain customers, cannot say free paper bags to our customers, to attract customers? And, I mean, I don't like this part about the ordinance. That seems like we're imposing too much governmental control on what a retailer wants to charge or not charge his customers to build his clientele base.
And it is. We can do that. There isn't the wiggle room to offer a free bag under our ordinance, and the idea is to implement disincentives for these waste bags, and try to promote reusable bags as a way for overall waste and litter reduction. That's just the impetus for what this is.
Let me read what the California Grocers Association has to say, at least part of it, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but first of all, they represent collectively 6,000 retail food stores in California. Experience with LA County Carryout Bag Ordinance, industry information is showing an almost immediate flip in consumer behavior, with over 70% of consumers either bringing their own bag, or choosing no bag at all. Over a period of a few months, the amount of consumers choosing not to use a single-use bag has climbed to over 80%. Stores that have seen this policy enacted for an even longer period of time have seen close to 94% of customers bringing in reusable bags, bringing their own bags, in other words. So, it looks like there's pretty much compliance on--
And, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, in relation to your question about whether the store could offer an incentive, they certainly could give away free reusable bags. We don't have any prohibition on that. So, if the store wanted to make an offer in that regard, they could offer the reusable bags, and we aren't, we don't have any, we aren't putting any regulatory control on that with this ordinance. So, they are certainly able to do that, or to offer their reusable bags at some discount. I know that stores right now are offering a free coupon. If you spend $10 or more, you can get a free reusable bag, so those kind of promotions are actually something that we would want stores to do. And again, they can use the charge from the paper bags to help offset any costs that may be associated with that.
And there are no exemptions for small mom-and-pop operators that might have a problem with this ordinance?
Mr. Menucha, not if they fall into the category in the coding system that we have. Now, one of the things we wanted to do was, we're taking a full year for implementation on smaller stores, to give them a chance to, as I say, to write, turn that--
They all fall into the categories that you have, so--
If they don't fall into the industry classification system categories that have been defined in the ordinance, then they wouldn't be subject to this.
I'm thinking of the small grocery stores, the mom-and-pop--
What's this 10,000-square-foot limitation?
That's the larger, the larger end, and then, what you would have is stores with the coding that would be supermarkets or other grocery--
Oh, I see.
Pharmacies or drugstores--
Okay.
Or convenience stores. And I have the related codes to that, wouldn't matter what size those were for Phase 2. It's the Phase 1 where you get the larger 10,000-square-foot of retail space or $2 million.
What does a paper bag cost, one of these?
Um--
Considering they're buying in bulk, so--
They, the estimate we have is about 5 and 1/4 cents.
Okay, so they're making, I mean, they're not losing money by charging for the bags. They're, of course, that other 4 cent and 1/2 cents are supposed to be paying towards education and that kind of thing, but they're not, even the smallest mom-and-pop is not losing money under this--
Now, and Ms. Friedman, there, I'm sure--
In fact, they're losing money now, because right now, they're paying 5 and 1/2 cents per bag.
Right.
After this, the customer's going to have to pay for that bag.
Correct.
So, they're going to save a significant amount of money each year.
Right. Now, it may cost the smaller stores a little more, because you obviously get volume discounts and these kind of things. Generally, you can get these as cheap as 5 cents, and the only requirement there is that they be recycled bags, that they have a certain amount of post-consumer recycled product.
Okay, I have a number of speakers. If there are no other questions, we'll move to the speakers. Sean Carroll, followed by Stephen, pardon, read the, that's named Bartza Phil.
Thank you very much. I am Sean Carroll, I'm the Federal Field Associate for Environment California.
Pardon.
Environment California is a statewide, citizen-based and citizen-funded environmental advocacy group, and so I'm here representing the 184,000 members, email activists, and volunteers we have across the state. And as a 501(c)(4) organization, we proudly stand up to urge the council to vote in support of banning plastic bags with a 10-cent fee on paper bags. I'll be quick, because I think the issue is pretty familiar to people, but it's worth highlighting why this is such an important issue to the environmental community. Plastic bags simply are a significant source of ocean pollution. Cleanup efforts in the LA River found that 43% of what was taken out of the LA River was either plastic bags or plastic bag film, and one out of every, and plastic bags are one of the four most common items found on beach cleanups. Also feeds into the Great Pacific Gyre, the huge mound of trash we have floating off of our ocean, about 1,000 miles off our coast. And this is, not surprisingly, a direct threat to wildlife. Leatherback turtles specifically will ingest plastic bags, thinking that they're jellyfish, one of the most common food items. And from hundreds of autopsies that have been done with the leatherback turtle in the last 50 years, they estimate that 37% of leatherback turtles have plastic bags in their stomach. We've seen several cases recently of whales, sperm whales, and baleen whales having plastic bags in their stomachs, as well as birds and fish. And, you know, I think anybody that's been to the beach in Los Angeles has seen plastic bags and ocean pollution on our beaches. We also encourage the council to support 10-cent fee on paper bags. Paper bags have significant environmental costs as well, from deforestation to energy consumption and water pollution. And this will encourage people to use reusable bags. If I could just close with the--
No, two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Bartza Phil, followed by Michael Reed.
Good evening, my name is Stephen Batzofin. I'm here representing business interests in support of the plastic bag ban. As the co-founder of Earthwise Bag Company, a reusable bag manufacturer located here in neighboring Burbank, I would like to encourage the city council to pass this important legislation. We are a company of more than 15 full-time employees, dozens of outside sales reps, and a large network of local printers, artists, manufacturers, and restaurants that we directly help support. A ban on plastic bags will assist us in growing our business, and as a result, hiring additional staff and investing further in our local community. These are good green jobs with competitive salaries and 100% paid healthcare. There are companies like Earthwise located throughout California, and together, we stand to grow and create more job opportunities. A thriving reusable bag industry is good for the local economy. The stakeholders in this issue are, as a majority, firmly behind a ban on single-use plastic bags. Local government will benefit from reduced litter and cleanup costs while generating more tax revenues. Nonprofits will achieve their environmental goals. Reusable bag manufacturers will grow their businesses. Local retailers such as Ralph's and Albertson's have been vocal about their support, and their trade group, as you mentioned, the California Grocers Association, stands firmly behind the measure as well. I'd like to offer myself and my company as a resource for information on this issue, and once again, would like to reiterate our support for a ban on single-use plastic bags.
Thank you. Michael Reed, followed by Sarah Sheehy. Oh, Michael Reed and the other spokesman.
And the younger Reed, who has been incredibly patient tonight. This is an educational opportunity as well. We may have turned her off to politics.
Hope so.
I sent an email to all of you, but I wanted to put a face to the name. My name is Michael Reed, I teach at Glendale College. I'm here representing myself, not the college, but I teach the only environmental class at the college, Human Impact on the Environment, and I talk to students a lot about these issues, who ask me questions constantly about what the city's doing, and what they can do, and so forth. And so, I'll just read to you the last two paragraphs for the-- And so I'll just read to you the last two paragraphs for the public record that I sent to you, a number of paragraphs by email today. I think we should never forget that plastics, which we've all become very comfortable with and familiar with in essentially my lifetime, are made from petrochemicals and do not organically break down. And while we take them for granted, they are building up in our ecosystems, and no one knows what that really means. They break into very small microscopic pieces, as you know from ever owning a car for a very long time. The stuff breaks apart, but it never is taken up by an ecosystem, and so it builds up. And I also want to say that I applaud the steps I see the city council taking on environmental issues, really giant leaps forward, and I'm thrilled about that. Keep up the good work. And I think it's a wonderful thing that I increasingly am able to tell my students that Glendale is a city that is fast becoming an environmental leader. Let me conclude by saying that the last time I managed to get down here to a city council meeting, the council voted to approve the U.N. Urban Environmental Accords, and I spoke in favor of that. It seems to me that this measure you...I hope you'll adopt is in line with those goals. Thank you very much.
Let me give the spokesperson a couple of pins.
Oh, that's excellent. Yeah, she's been remarkably patient.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Sheehy with the California Grocers Association. I had talking points, but I think I'm gonna address some of these issues. So, number one, approximate cost of a paper bag is 10 cents, not 5 cents and 3/4. We don't make any money. Some of the smaller stores, their cost is about 12 cents if the paper bags come with handles. Some of the larger stores get them for 7 cents. So 10 cents is a good estimation. We don't make any money on this. You must mandate the 10-cent charge. Let me reiterate. It's a hugely important part of the ordinance. Without the mandate, our stores will just...it's a race to the bottom. Everybody will give away free paper, because they have to compete with their neighbors. It costs our stores thousands of dollars, because we basically go from offering a free 1-cent plastic bag to a free 10-cent paper bag. Does not encourage reusable bag use. It's not an environmentally sound solution and is just a very key...very important and a key component to the ordinance. The second thing that I wanted to iterate is, we also like councils to consider a broader definition of banning plastic. After all, we feel if a plastic bag is detrimental at Ralph's, it's detrimental at Home Depot. But the current definition you have is acceptable. It does include smaller mom-and-pop stores. That is pretty imperative for us. They sell the same products we do. We need them to be on the same playing field as us, which means banning plastic and charging mandated 10-cent charge for paper. I'm running out of time, but I am around for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Garan Nadir, followed by Andy Schrader.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council members and city staff. My name is Garan Nadir, and I'm here on behalf of the Coalition for a Green Glendale, a local environmental organization. With tonight's vote on the plastic bag ban ordinance, the city council will be making significant strides in making the city greener and better. Indeed, changing one's habits can sometimes be challenging, and accordingly, some of our residents may express resistance to the ordinance, because it arguably makes shopping less convenient. Nevertheless, change is necessary. A lack of convenience is a small price to pay for the betterment of our environment, local ecosystems, and the health of our future generations. Loose plastic bags that litter the ground and get caught in the tree branches not only are aesthetically displeasing, but these bags either end up filling our landfills or infiltrating the L.A. River. The ordinance will help mitigate these harmful aspects of the plastic bag use. A number of people have approached me, expressing concern about the ban. Some ask, "Well, how will I pick up my dog waste?" I inform these individuals that the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale is actively installing depositories in neighborhoods around town. And these depositories provide dog walkers a means to pick up after their pet, and I certainly encourage the city to continue doing so. Another concern I come across in regard...is in regard to the renewable bags themselves. Some argue that the bags are not made of environmentally sound materials, and they are shipped all the way from China, thereby prompting continued environmental harm. These claims may or may not be true, depending on the type of renewable bag you purchase. Even if these claims are true, relatively speaking, renewable bags are a significant improvement over single-use bags. Using renewable bags is definitely a step in the right direction. While this ordinance exempt restaurants and fast-food chains, it is my hope that the future ordinance will be applicable to those establishments as well. In conclusion, I'd like to reiterate my support for the plastic bag ban ordinance, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Andy Schrader, followed by Graham Hamilton.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. To see why Glendale needs to address the problem of plastic pollution, one needs to look no further than the L.A. River. I'm sure you agree...these were taken upstream from Glendale. And I'm sure you agree, a clean river will be essential to the success of the Glendale Narrows plans. Plastic bag bans do work. The city of San Jose last month reported a reduction of plastic bags of 59% on city streets, 60% in creeks and rivers, and 89% in the storm drain system. That's a significant financial savings by the city. Marine debris is also a larger economic issue. In 2009, the Asian-Pacific Economic Cooperation found that marine debris in the year before directly cost the 21 APEC-member economies, including the United States, approximately $1.2 billion. In these days of struggling budgets, marine debris is an avoidable cost. Glendale's location along the banks of the L.A. River gives the city an important responsibility as a caretaker of the river, of the ocean it flows into, and the creatures that live within it. In addition to Earthwise Bags, we also have some other local reusable bag makers who will benefit, including one of my favorites, Green Vets L.A., who puts returning homeless and disabled vets to work making reusable bags in an occupational therapy setting. It's good for the planet. It's good for the economy. The grocers like it. Please vote for it. Thank you.
Graham Hamilton. That's my final card.
Good evening, council. My name is Graham Hamilton, and I'm here on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation's West L.A. Malibu chapter. I am the co-chair of the Rise Above Plastics campaign, and aside from facts and statistics, I want to bring kind of a personal message to the board tonight. I live in Santa Monica, and we had our first seasonal flush just before the holiday. And the beaches primarily out in my part of town are pretty clean, by and large. But after the first flush, walking down there, it's littered with plastic debris. And these are bottles, these are plastic bags, these are toys. And the majority of these plastic items are coming from upstream. They're coming from the mountains, and as they wash down, they end up on the beach. This is something that we can cut off at the source. And the reality is, whether Glendale gets on board with a bag ban now, it's an inevitability. So I encourage you to take the opportunity to enact this important piece of environmental legislation. Do it now. Don't let your predecessors take credit for a great piece of legislation that benefits everybody, from business folk to environmentalists alike. That's it. Thank you for your service.
Okay, that's the final speaker card. Comments? Anyone want to introduce the ordinance? Mr. Weaver.
Just a couple of comments. This is really a no-brainer. Some of you have heard me say this before. When I worked for the Corps of Engineers, I was a project manager on the rehab of the L.A. River for about 10 or more years. I walked just about every mile of the river. The main pollution source coming in from the side drains were Styrofoam cups. Very few plastic bags. It just goes to show how rapidly the one-time bags have proliferated in this community and brought us to this point. During December, when I was decorating the Rosefloat, I had cause to go get supplies at Smart &amp; Final. I got to lay everything out. When I paid, the lady said, "Would you like a bag?" I can't carry everything. That'll be 10 cents. So I paid. Oh, they're ahead of us. So I paid it. Then yesterday, at Airport Commission Meeting, I talked to one of the Pasadena Commissioners, and they just did a cleanup of the Arroyo Seco. And they said dramatic improvement when they put the ban on the one-time plastic bags. It really reduced the amount of rubbish in the Arroyo Seco. So it's a no-brainer. It's inevitable. It's gotta happen, and we're just gonna join the crowd. Hopefully, one day, they'll find a way to substitute for Styrofoam cups, because they're still going down there. Thank you.
You want to... Friedman, if you want to introduce it.
Yeah, I'm in support of the ordinance. I'm not gonna repeat everything that was said. All I'll say is, I do think that at some point, we should talk about expanding it. IKEA no longer gives out bags. You have to purchase bags. It doesn't seem to hurt their business at all. And I do think that the grocers were a great step, but they made a very good point. Why not some of these other stores? Why not a hardware store? What's particular about food that wouldn't be with some of these other establishments? And I think we should go there. And also to talk about things like Styrofoam. A lot of the more progressive restaurants, Starbucks, no longer uses Styrofoam. They're serving very hot stuff, and it doesn't seem to make any difference. And, you know, if businesses aren't doing it on their own, I think it's up to us, as in some ways protectors of public health and the environment of our city and other areas, to go there and to make those sorts of decisions. So I'll vote for this today, and I would hope that we can bring back further ordinances in this direction in the future.
Yes, thank you. And I will be supporting the ordinance. I had my reservations initially in terms of how it would affect the smaller businesses, the mom-and-pop grocery stores that are so prevalent in Glendale and serve the neighborhoods around those little stores. But I was out today, and I spoke with one grocery store, and they said it will not affect their business to the extent that I thought it would. However, there is a concern about those individuals who don't have the means to get their daily food, actually, to charge them an extra 10 cents for the bags. But I think in the overall scheme of things, it will be acceptable, and I think generally the public will be supportive of it. If there are programs such as giving away reusable bags, which some grocery stores, I think, are promoting, I think that would go a long way in dealing with the issue of those who don't have the means to pay these fees. And I know the city has some reusable bags that we can actually promote to give away.
And I'm glad you brought that up.
Can do that, that would be great. Some recyclable bags.
We actually sell them for our cost, and we buy them in bulk, so we get a good price. So if you go to our website, you can buy them from us. We do give them away at community events.
The Coalition for a Greener Glendale has been giving them away in front of the grocery stores for quite a while. They've given away hundreds, if not thousands, of the bags. And there also is a provision, right? If you are on food stamps, if you're on assistance, you don't have to pay the 10-cent fee.
That is correct.
So just to point that out.
In fact, the stores have to provide the reusable bags for any individuals in the WIC or the regular supplemental...
So they get the reusable bags from them?
The store will provide that.
Well, that makes me feel much more comfortable, actually. I think that's a good policy. So I will be supporting the ordinance.
I'll reserve my comments for next week.
Do I have a motion on the resolution?
I'll move 8(c)(1).
A second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Friedman.
Was it not for introduction?
It's resolution.
This is the reso for the environmental document.
The...
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Manjari?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
Mayor, I'll introduce the ordinance at 8(c)(2).
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, and we will confirm with you next week, my reading of the ordinance and also some input we have from the environmental consultant is, I believe the council can enforce this on any retail establishment. And it says in here, "non-food items" as part of the category, so we'll double-check that. But I believe, under this ordinance, we could extend this to hardware stores, for instance. But I'll confirm that and bring that back to you next week.
Right. Next.
Mr. Mayor and council, as was stated at the start of the meeting, item 8d has been taken off calendar, so it will not be discussed this evening. The next item is a return to item 6, Oral Communications. This is a portion where discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report. I'd like to ask everyone who comes up to just clear their...state their names clearly to the microphone before they start speaking. Thank you.
Okay. So 6 o'clock, you've only been here an hour and a half, actually. It went fairly fast. I thought it was gonna take longer. Jay Rando, followed by Roberta Medford.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jay Rando, and I'm here to speak about punishing the innocent for the actions of the guilty. Or, as we're gonna call it tonight, the Rafi Manukian attempt to stop the Glendale gun show, or Rafi Manukian logic. I want to get right to the point, actually a couple right away. If we punish the innocent for the actions of the guilty, how...what do we really accomplish? Well, we can call this Manukian logic, because he suggested that banning gun sales on our city property is somehow gonna make us safer. It's going to stop the skyrocketing murder rate in Glendale. Of course, the murder rate in Glendale, I'd like to point out, has been zero for the past couple of years. But let's go ahead and use this razor-sharp logic and continue right on down this line of reasoning. The murder rate in Glendale actually peaked when a Mr. Alvarez allegedly parked his Jeep Cherokee on railroad tracks near the 5 freeway and resulted in the murder of 11 people. Of course, let's not forget a Mr. Savita Gregorian, his Chrysler M300. He took it, hit a woman that was 75 years old, killed her, and was charged with hit-and-run. How about the actions of a Mr. Eric Gregorian? He's absolutely no relation. He drove his Mercedes S430 at 60-plus miles per hour, hitting and killing a woman, throwing her 75 feet. Then he ran to Mexico, attempted to flee, and we had to bring him back. If we continue using Manukian logic, then we must have the Jeep Chrysler Auto Dealer, as well as the Mercedes dealers, removed from Glendale. And any auto lot that sells these cars need to be removed, because obviously, these cars are killing people. If we use Manukian logics further, we have to say that all drivers maybe who claim to be Hispanic ethnic origin or Armenian ethnic origin, they can't drive. Obviously, they're all guilty. These two gentlemen, these three people that I pointed out, they were. They need to be banned from driving in Glendale. And the famous Glendale Cruise Night, we need to get rid of that. That show needs to be stopped immediately. It promotes car violence. What? You don't think it prevents, what, car violence? How dare you question our logic here? Gun shows must prevent violence by guns. Therefore, the car shows are promoting car violence. Can't you see that? Of course, if we continue down Manukian logic road further, what about our city council members? Let's start going ahead and punishing them for things they haven't done. Frank Quintero served in the U.S. Marine Corps during Vietnam. Does that mean that we should not let him go down Branville Boulevard, because there happens to be a Vietnamese restaurant there? You're gonna go all ramble on me all of a sudden? Probably not a good idea. If you look at Rafi Manukian, he said that he was originally came from Iran. Well, is he an agent provocateur from Iran? I hope not. But the Iranians have a stated belief that those who practice the Jewish religion, like Laura Friedman does, should be killed. It's a good thing there's two people between you. Maybe both of you should be gone. This does not do anything for us. Let's move on to our number three point. Let's define the actual problem. We can seek out debating and reach a logical conclusion. It's the American way. We don't punish people for something they haven't done. Do gun shows really make us safe? Well, let's see a show of hands from the city council. Have any of you been to the Glendale Gun Show ever? Great. If you went there, you'd see that in addition to guns, you have the lady who makes the jewelry and sharpens your knives while you wait. You have the guy who's got every tool known to mankind. You've got the leather belt and wallet man. You've got the watches-galore guy. And you have the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. They show up for that. They help people fill out their forms, and they make sure the forms are filled out properly and that nobody's trying to do anything illegal. They're very good about that. But what you also see beyond that is you see a group of law-abiding people. They've not hurt anybody. They're not going out to shoot anybody. They're not going to do anything wrong. In fact, they're rather polite, sort of on a... Sort of an amazing thing when you go around today. Banning the gun show will not add to our safety or our security. In fact, the reasons given in Manukian logic accomplish just the opposite. If you give the illusion of safety, you give everybody the illusion that somehow they're gonna be safe, but you don't make them safe, that's worse than exposing them to the danger, because they're in no way prepared. I mean, just go ahead and take a look at an analog in the Serengeti. He doesn't have those night vision goggles. He's still looking for the lion in the middle of the field. My father is gonna turn a hundred and three in one week. And he reminded me of something that was really important. He said prohibition has never worked. He lived through the original prohibition, and he said the only thing it did was, you created more criminals and more crime. We don't need to ban gun show in Glendale. That has done nothing to anyone. What we need to do is go ahead and make Glendale a safer community than it already is. If the council ever would like to have some ideas on this, I'd be happy to share how we can make our schools safer, and how we could make our streets have less pedestrian car interactions than we have now. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I've never been to Iran, so...
I didn't think you had, but I think you've...
Sorry.
There's no interchange. For those of you that are speaking, we listen to the comments. There's no exchange in oral communication. Roberta Medford, followed by Charles Hooker.
Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, staff, and viewers, I'm Roberta Medford. I live in the Montrose area of Glendale. I am here to speak in support of greater gun safety. As mentioned by our city clerk in the prayer, yesterday in Newtown, Connecticut, was the month anniversary of the killing of the twenty elementary school children. And the parents marked the anniversary by announcing the formation of Sandy Hook Promise, an organization to honor their children by actions, working to prevent further mass killings. Similarly, we have an opportunity here, we have two opportunities, to take action toward more gun responsibility. I think the first one is ending the gun shows in the Glendale Civic Auditorium. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Manukian's effort to ban these shows, and I hope that the entire council votes for it when it does come up as an ordinance. There is no problem with access to guns in California, even with our fairly stringent gun laws. There is absolutely no reason for the city of Glendale to feel obligated to make gun access any easier. The less than fifty-five thousand dollars that it brings into our city revenue, as I understand, will neither make nor break our budget. Standing up and identifying ourselves in Glendale with gun sanity may even attract new vendors to the civic auditorium. The second way that we in Glendale can help create a civic, a safer society, is by joining a group, a bipartisan group, known as Mayors Against Illegal Guns. It has over eight hundred members across the country. These are mayors of cities and small towns who cooperate to create policies that reduce gun violence. While supporting the Second Amendment, they work together to transcend inflammatory politics and to apply common sense gun enforcement with the safety of their citizens in mind. In California, there are forty-one mayors, as of this morning, who have joined Mayors Against Illegal Guns. And in Southern California, they include Inglewood, Pasadena, Irvine, Los Angeles, Montclair, San Bernardino, Long Beach, Huntington Beach, Santa Barbara, Santa Ana, and Palm Springs. I would like to see the city of Glendale join that list. I learned about Mayors Against Illegal Guns from my friends in Montrose, who are members of the congregation of the Crescent Valley United Methodist Church, and their pastor, Pastor Paige Eves. Encouraging their hometown leaders to join Mayors Against Illegal Guns is a social action project of the United Methodist Women. So I hope you will be hearing from some Methodist women, and I wanted to add my support as a concerned atheist to their efforts. Mayor Quintero, you have said that you think it's, the time has come to reexamine our over-easily access to guns. I couldn't agree more. Let's honor Sandy Hook and remember the children by saying, along with one of their parents yesterday, doing nothing is no longer an option. Thank you very much.
Charles Hooker, followed by Roland Doltz.
My name is Charlie Hooker. I'm a native of Glendale, and I'm ashamed of one of our councilpeople. Of course, I, that's why, one reason why he was voted out of office last time around, because of his attitude and his no care for anybody else but just wanting to be in office. The common cold kills more people than guns. Automobile accidents kill more people than guns. Heart attacks and strokes kill more people than guns. The Second Amendment gives us the right to bear harms. Are we going to become a socialist city for Mr. Councilman? Last summer, one of our councilmen wanted to do the same person, wanted to do with the car show and hot rod show. I guess that's, he can't take automobiles either. When, when does this councilperson stop? The only way that you can get rid of this councilperson is if you vote. And if you don't vote, then that same councilman gets back in office again. Please, his seat comes up for election this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
This can be taken care of.
Yeah, we have to... Mr. Mayor...
Get rid of this person.
I just wanted to address the council, as you know, advocating for or against a candidate during oral communications is not permitted purposes to discuss city business.
Well, I beg your pardon on that. Then please, all I can say is, people, please come out and vote. So I think that should do it. Thank you.
Roland Doltz, followed by Ronald Malis.
Good evening, City Manager. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Roland Doltz, and I reside and also a property owner of the 200 block of Maple Street, which sits between Central and Bran. I'm here this evening because the situation on that particular stretch is becoming unbearable in regards to parking. The only restriction we have for parking on that stretch of street is street cleaning on Thursdays from eight o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock. There's no other restriction. We have, on the corner of Central and Maple, we have L.A. Fitness, 623 South Central. We also have 710 Central, which houses a Social Security Office and the Board of Barbering and Cosmetology Examination Facility. This is going on, the L.A. Fitness is seven days a week. The other two facilities are five days a week. I've had on numerous occasions have to call Glendale PD to just get out of my driveway, because people park in the driveway. It's becoming a real issue. Not only do we have those places, now we have Metropole, which is now on the corner of Maple and Central. That place is not in business yet. When it opens, it's not gonna be a day problem, it's gonna be a problem till two o'clock in the morning. Okay? Metropole, which sits on Central and Maple. Because of the dealerships that we have on Bran, they, there was a lot of closures of streets that connected Bran and Central. Maple is the only street, one of the only streets that connect Bran and Central. So Maple is a fairview. It's no longer a street, it's an auto bond. The speed limit is not respected on that street. When you pull out of your driveway, you have to use, you have to be very cautious. Otherwise, you can get clipped. There's been a signal put on the corner of Maple and Central because of all the accidents that we've had. Now, I spoke today with Jeff Brown, which is his assistant parking manager, and he informed me of a TPC meeting that we're having on the 25th. I will be at that meeting. The one solution that they're giving me is that I have to petition to do this. Now, seventy-five percent petitioners have to approve this form that I'm getting. Maple Street is a very short street. Most of the residents on that street are non-English-speaking people. There are Armenians, elderly. I'm gonna take the time to get the petition. So what is it that I can do, councilmembers, to alleviate this problem that we have on Maple Street? Because there seems to be every, to facilitate for the car dealership, for the residents, I've owned this property for twenty-six years, and in the last five years, I've seen a, it's just, it's horrible. It's horrible. There's no parking, so what can we do? I'm asking you, as councilmembers, what can I do? Because I'm at a loss. Every time I have a guest coming to my house, they cannot find a parking space. The problem doesn't go away on Sunday. The church which sits on Central, they take every parking space half a mile away from that church, the Armenian church which sits on Central. So I also have the issue on Sundays. So I'm asking, I'm pleading the councilmembers, what can I do to alleviate this problem, so when I have guests in my house, they can come and find a space to park?
Okay, well, as I mentioned, we don't respond at oral...
I understand.
You can have a seat. We can talk to you after that.
I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Ronald Malis, followed by Lou Fried.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, staff. I'm just here as a concerned citizen, speaking in support of the Glendale Gun Show. The state of California has arguably the strictest gun laws in the country. The guns that everyone has been concerned about with these recent shootings are not legal in California. High-capacity magazines with most, under most, excuse me, under most circumstances are not legal in California. Most people do not have access to these weapons or magazines. And at the Glendale Gun Show, it's a law-abiding gun show, as another gentleman mentioned. The ATF is on site. Everyone that purchases a firearm at the show must go through a NICs background check, and the weapon is not delivered that day. There is a ten-day waiting period per California law. Also, there's been no associated instances of crime with the Glendale Gun Show. The people that attend this gun show are law-abiding. They know the law, and they abide by the law. So therefore, since these weapons that everyone's concerned about aren't legal in California, and the Glendale Gun Show clientele follows the law, there's nothing to be concerned about here. There is no safety issue, as people have brought up with these mass shootings. So if there's no safety issue, people are following the law, then there is no logical reason to end the Glendale Gun Show. It just seems that certain segments and members of our society just don't like guns. That's the only reason. And one other speaker mentioned the Mayors Against Illegal Guns supposedly being for common sense gun regulation. That is not the case. They are against firearms in society, and they would like to see firearms removed from society. So I'm just in support of the Glendale Gun Show. I'd like you to just consider the facts and keep the Glendale Gun Show. Thank you.
Lou Fried, followed by Steve Friesen. Steve Friesen? Followed by Lawrence Limb.
Good evening, Glendale City Council. My name is Steve Friesen. I am the owner and the promoter of the Glendale Gun Show. I'm here this evening asking the city council to not support any measure that will close down the Glendale Gun Show. The Glendale Gun Show has a long history with the city of Glendale and the Glendale Civic Auditorium. I have owned and promoted the Glendale Gun Show for the past eight years, my predecessor since 1962. I'm sorry, 1992, my apologies. I was speaking recently to a gentleman who's a vendor at the Glendale Gun Show, who remembers exhibiting wares at the Glendale Gun Show in the late 1960s. There's a long history here in this, with this, with the city and the Glendale Civic Auditorium. The Glendale Gun Show is a legal business and is heavily regulated by the state of California. There is no gun show loophole in the state of California. All federal, state, and local laws must be adhered to the gun show. Firearms are not transferred at the Glendale Civic Auditorium at the day of the gun show. People select the firearm, fill out the legal paperwork, and ten days later, pick up the firearm from a licensed transfer dealer at another location after they have passed the background check. I have a contract with the city of Glendale to have the Glendale Gun Show. The city of Glendale would be in breach of contract by taking any action to prohibit hosting the Glendale Gun Show. Alameda County banned gun shows on its property and was recently found in violation of the First and Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as well as the equal protection clause. The gun show is a source of income directly to the city of Glendale and indirectly to city employees, hotels, restaurants, and other Glendale establishments. I would like to continue to have the Glendale Gun Show at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. And again, I am asking the city council to not support any measure that would close down the Glendale Gun Show. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Lawrence Limb, followed by Paul Payne.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Lawrence Limb. I'm a member of the city of Glendale. Would it be appropriate if I transfer my speaking time to someone else?
No, not, we don't do that. Oral communication...
Okay, very good. I'd like to add to one of the other speakers in that when you do a firearm transfer, the transfer of the firearm does not take place at the gun show. There's a ten-day waiting period where the firearm is ultimately transferred to the buyer after the Department of Justice background check. So no firearms are transferred at the gun show. Secondly, I believe we should pass laws that are effective in addressing the problem. We do a disservice to the memory of those victims by passing ordinances that just make us feel good. We should pass something that actually makes a difference. Thank you.
Paul Payne, followed by Jerry Schultz.
Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers. My name's Paul Payne. I'm with the National Rifle Association. All of my points, I think, tonight have pretty much been taken, so I'm just gonna kind of wing it and hit a few things. With all due respect, I believe that this proposed ordinance is, it's a solution looking for a problem. We know, nobody in here believes, that there is a problem at the Glendale Gun Show. So why would we decide that we're going to take actions that would affect the business of the Glendale Gun Show, where lawful business and commerce takes place? Well, it has to be just one reason, political motivation. We all are political. We all have our own views, and we've all have our own feelings about tragedy. The proponent mentioned the First Amendment, and the First Amendment is a very important aspect of gun shows, as the courts have ruled. And I'm not gonna get into all that stuff right now. Another person mentioned children, and families, and mothers and fathers. And we all have mothers and fathers. We're all somebody's children. I know, I buried my father, who was murdered by a criminal with a gun. Yet I stand here today, representing the thousands of members of the National Rifle Association. How could that be? Very simple, because my family refuses to relegate our loss into the attack of honest, law-abiding citizens, people who don't have any ill will towards others, people who don't want anybody to violate laws or hurt other people. The National Rifle Association is for safe and responsible firearms ownership. We've all heard all of the media stories, we've all heard all of the hyperbole, and I'm not gonna go into all that right now. This isn't the time for it. I'm going to make an offer. The city of Glendale has an offer on the table by the National Rifle Association to do something, to work with us, to do something that actually saves children's lives. I offer you the Eddie Eagle Gun Safety Program. Millions upon millions, tens of millions of children have participated in the Eddie Eagle Gun Safety Program, and I'm here to work with you. The Eddie Eagle Gun Safety Program teaches childrens, children, if they find a gun, stop, don't touch, leave the area, tell an adult. That's it. We save lives. I submit to you that this ordinance... I submit to you that this ordinance, and many other ordinances that I've seen recently, do nothing to save lives, does nothing to stop crime, because there is no crime associated with this. Political grandstanding is something that they do back in DC. It's not something we should do here in California, and certainly not here in Glendale. And if you are really, seriously interested in saving lives, I submit to you that maybe a good suggestion would be to do a substitute ordinance next week, and take some serious action. I gave the city clerk my card, he's got my contact information, and I await your response. Thank you.
Jerry Schultz, followed by Tom Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jerry Schultz. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Glendale Gun Show. My background, I was a council member in Long Beach for eight years. I was a deputy sheriff of Los Angeles County for 28 years. I'm now retired. I'm an Army veteran, Vietnam vet, four combat tours, and I'm currently a member of the California State Military Reserve. And in that capacity, I have worked at this gun show three times a year ever since they've been in your city. We set up an informational recruiting booth, because I am a recruiter. And I'll tell you that of all the venues we work all over Southern California, this is the most productive venue of all, meaning we recruit more soldiers for the SMR from this one event. And I attribute that mostly to the type of people that come to the Glendale Gun Show. We have a tremendous amount of active and retired police officers, including from your own city, a large number of active and retired military, including from your own city. And I've even, from time to time, seen elected officials from many cities in the LA area come here to buy things. You know, this isn't just a gun show, as was mentioned earlier tonight. It's a nice place to shop. It's a family event. And I've seen families over the years come here with their kids and grandma, and shopping for various items that have nothing to do with guns, ammo. It could be knickknacks, it could be items of clothing, it could be jewelry, tools, even beef jerky down in the basement. It's pretty good here. My point is, during all the time we've been here, and we're always set up right by the door, which means we see everybody who comes and goes. I have never once, on any occasion, seen any type of a negative event or incident that resulted in needing to call the local police department. It is a well-run, well-organized show, never any problems. And with my past time in law enforcement, I don't recall any time where any weapons used in any major crimes have ever been traced back to the Glendale Gun Show. So what is the issue here? I heard a prior speaker refer to the organization called Mayors Against Illegal Guns. I never heard about the organization, but I will venture to guess there's not a mayor in this country would not want to join such an organization. But that's not the issue here. If this mayor and council goes on record in denying the ability of the Glendale Gun Show to continue, you will, in effect, have become mayors and council against legal guns. And that is not the American way. Thank you.
Tom Murphy, followed by John Linder.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. I also am here in support of the Glendale Gun Show, and I appreciate the opportunity, even though it's not an agenda item, I realize. By way of introduction, I joined the Army in 1967. I retired after 43 years. So I've shot a lot of guns. I've shot them at people, I've had them shoot at me. Went to Vietnam, went to Iraq a couple times. So I know what a gun is, I know what it can do, and I know that there are awful results that come from them. For anyone to think anything other than an attack on a child, an attack on anybody is anything but abominable, they're fools. But as that said, let me say that the Glendale Gun Show doesn't really pertain to that sort of person. The Glendale Gun Show sells guns, yes, but I will emphasize that those guns do not go out the door. That there is a 10-day waiting period. So any gun that is purchased, so to speak, at the Glendale Gun Show is not taken out of the Glendale Gun Show. If you see guns coming out of the building, it's because they brought them in there, perhaps to buy a scope, perhaps to buy a sling. Who can say? I don't know. But it was not because they were purchased there. Those guns came in the door, and in turn, they went out the door. So yes, Glendale is a gun show, but it's also a form of swap meet. Being a vendor there, the lady next to me, the vendor next to me, sells I Love Lucy lunch pails, for example, and things like that. You can buy tools, you can buy food, you can buy clothing, books. You can buy a variety of things. If you want to buy a gun, go to Big Five. They'll sell you a gun, they'll sell you the ammo. It's not an issue. I think the issue of the Glendale Gun Show is it has been made a scapegoat for events far out of anyone's control. I don't hear anyone discussing the issue of mental illness. That was the cause of Newtown. The gun was simply the instrument. But I don't hear anyone talking about that. But when I hear the Glendale Gun Show, and I'm a veteran of Glendale Gun Show for years, I hear people coming and having fun, I hear families coming, I hear people getting things that they cannot get other places, and someone kind of made a disparaging comment about $54,000 that goes into your coffers. Well, where I live, $54,000 is a lot of money. And if you want to throw it away, I suppose that's your opinion of the value of the dollar, but I happen to think that it's money that you can use with really nothing that hurts your city. And it enhances the reputation of Glendale, because Glendale is a regional gun show. It brings people into the city. Where they spend money, yes, but they also walk away with a favorable impression of Glendale. It's a very nice facility, it's a classic building. And the show is well-run, it's well-regulated. Glendale PD patrols it. Though to say that if anything less, I think, is doing a disservice to the show, your city, and the people that live in your city. I would like you to consider the alternatives for what you are proposing.
John Linder, followed by Robert Weed.
Mayor Quintero, council members, my name is John Linder. I'm speaking as an individual. I too, like the two previous speakers, I'm an Army veteran. I also am a serving member in the California State Military Reserve. I'm a recruiting NCO, and the Glendale Gun Show has been an important part of our mission to the state of California. I think, in hearing some of the comments made here this evening, I think it's unfortunate that the word "gun" is in the word "Glendale Gun Show", because it truly is much more than a gun show. We are positioned inside the front door, we're trained observers, we see people come and go. We assist people that are looking for memorabilia for maybe a lost son that was lost overseas in a war zone. Grandparent, and aunt, and uncle are trying to put together some military medals or paraphernalia in order to honor a lost one. There's other material there that's purchased at the gun show that I have personally included in earthquake preparedness for my family, for family members, that you can't find anywhere else. The Glendale Gun Show is truly a family event. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of other things that have already been stated, but I think that to do justice to this city of Glendale, to yourselves, please give some careful consideration to how you might move forward with this issue, because it's much more than just a gun show, and it's a healthy place for a lot of people. Thank you.
Robert Weed, or Y-W-E-I-D-E. Robert? Eric Botema, followed by Apodaca, H. Apodaca.
Good evening, my name's Eric Botema, and I've been a resident of Glendale my whole life. I work as a police officer locally. And I'm in support of the Glendale Gun Show. I think we should still have it. I think it's ridiculous that Mr. Mnuchin is bringing this topic up again. I was here back in '06 to discuss this. And this initiative will not stop crime. It doesn't do anything. I talk to criminals on a daily basis, and none of them have got them at the Glendale Gun Show. Most criminals get their guns off the streets, stolen weapons out of innocent people's homes. And my suggestion to the city of Glendale is, why don't we take this $55,000, create a team for Glendale PD to go do more parole checks, and get these guns off the streets? The Glendale Gun Show has really been a great event for everyone to find collectible guns. You can't find these things at, you know, your Big Five. There's very few gun shows, or gun stores locally. So I just urge, I know this is not an agenda item, but I urge you guys to reconsider this, and we continue to have this show. Thank you.
H. Apodaca, "Daca" is his last name. A Jonathan Finnegan, followed by R.B. Karapetian. Jonathan Finnegan. R.B. Karapetian. Edward True. Edward True. Followed by Bruce Boxer.
Good evening, Mayor. Let me start off by saying a comment that a previous... Said that there's a long history to Glendale Gun Show without any issues. But so was there's... There was a long history to Pomona Gun Shows for years. There was no issues until the North Hollywood bank robbers purchased their ammunition from the Pomona Gun Show, and they used it. So we got to realize that part. So I'm going to start by reading a brief statement from Los Angeles Supervisor, Mr. Zen. Quote, "The county should not be profiting from the gun business. We should not be leasing or renting our property for the sale of gun or ammunition of any kind." This was in 1999, after North Hollywood shooting, which was committed by two robbers. They had purchased guns and ammunition from Pomona Gun Show. Since the city of Los Angeles no longer allows any gun shows... I was here not too long ago when Ms. Laura Friedman was the mayor. I pleaded to put a stop to the gun show, but nothing got done. I'm here once again asking you to no longer rent or lease city-owned property for selling any kind of ammunition or gun. Hopefully, you're aware that as an adult can go to Glendale Gun Show, purchase thousands of ammunition without any questions being asked. Here are a couple of comments from buyers on Yelp.com. Mr. Clayton, "If you're looking for a few boxes of ammo, the Glendale Gun Show will serve you very fine." Dennis, "If you're just wanting to pick some ammo at a good price and leave in LA, it's a sure bet." Quote, "What if ammunition purchased at our city-owned facility ends up harming someone? By allowing guns or ammunition be sold now, what will you tell the victims?" Mayor Contino and City Council. "It saddens me when I see signs being posted throughout LA several times a year, reading Glendale Gun Show. I will bet that council members from cities such as Pasadena, Santa Monica, or San Marino would say not in my backyard." Thank you.
Bruce Boxer, followed by Mike Mohill. Bruce Boxer. Mike Mohill, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Arne Nijarren, recently in making reference to the city's volunteers and their programs, said, quote, "As the city budget reaches its limit, the community many times steps in and helps with many of these programs." In the past, former Mayor Laura Freeman expressed those same sentiments to one of the solutions, the city's budget crisis. Both these council members are very proud that the city has so many volunteer organizations to pick up the pieces of previous expected city services, according to the Glendale News-Press article. Today, Mrs. Freeman is quoted as saying she wants to create a new position to act as a nonprofit coordinator, which will help the city and nonprofits save money. "We respect the daily services performed by our fire, police, and general employees of the city. However, where is the responsibility..." I say the word "responsibility" from council members when they have received thousands of dollars in campaign money from the city unions, and then approved salaries and pensions in the millions of dollars that are both unfunded and unsustainable? In a recent Glendale News-Press article, Bob Elliott, Finance Director, said, quote, "At some point, we'll have more retirees than active employees." In December 2008, city services have only needed to be slashed by $2 million rather than $10 million if our fiscal conservative-minded city council members in 2008 had not approved the $8 million pay raise for city employees. I said $8 million. "It seems we have council members who do not want to take responsibility for their past actions." Councilman Arne Nijarren is famous to have said, "What's done is done." Councilwoman Laura Freeman said Social Security was only meant to keep people, that's the general public, from abject poverty. But she and her colleagues have had no problems in approving millions of dollars in city employees' pensions. Where is the shame and disgrace to put city employees' benefits before the needs of the public served by this city council? On another matter, last night, at the Glendale Home Owners Coordinating Council meeting, our city manager Scott Ochoa's performance was disappointing and misleading. A question was asked from the audience concerning our reserve funds in the GWP, Glendale Water and Power. Mr. Ochoa stated, "In 2005, while he was the city manager in Monrovia," excuse me, "the city council electrical reserve funds were about $150 million." He further stated, "At the time, money was going to be spent on the Dietrich Reservoir upgrades." For the records, the council was originally going to finance the upgrade by passing a bond, but that was later canceled, Mr. Ochoa. If the taxpayers only paid about $30 million for the reservoir upgrades, where did the remaining $120 million go? I further understand, today, we have no money, I said the word "no money", in the electrical reserve funds that is unrestricted of the GWP. Mr. Ochoa, is it true the Grayson Plant, located along San Fernando Road, is very old and needs about $230 million in upgrades? Will the city council, after the April election, go back to the ratepayers and ask for more rate increases for the next five to 10 years, and another bond for our children and grandchildren to pay for the past and current mistakes of council? In just 12 years, our city council has drained the GWP of approximately $235 million, going right into the pockets of our city employees for their salaries and their pensions that are both unsustainable and unfunded. Council members, city managers, and city attorney, why the cover-up at the GWP? Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Mike Hammond, followed by Alan Kachatorian. Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Mayor Quintero, members of council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I'm glad to see you're here. I was here last week, and you weren't. I think that must be about the longest time that the city council has not met. Four weeks? That's a heck of a long time, guys. Okay, but I guess the city survived. Anyway, my thought is, on guns, we need guns to protect ourselves. I don't own one, and never... I'm kind of a little bit scared of them, but for people that have them, and what would we do if the police didn't have them? The bad guys that have them, and our good guys wouldn't. So what can I say? There's good and bad in everything. The other thing is now, free bulky item. 818-548-3916, right, Mr. Zern? Thank you. And what I would like to know, there is a lot of junk laying around, and the trees and so forth, particularly down in my area, on Adams Hill, in that area. And also, there have been TVs laying on the right-of-way for at least three weeks, and I don't know what we can do about that. I guess they don't pick them up. But I would like to know, and I've asked this for years, why the employees on the trucks that go around cannot call in and ask for those items to be picked up? I know that the citizens are supposed to do it, they're not doing it. And I don't know why, because it sure makes the area look junky. My other thought is, on the... My other thought is, on the smoking, which you took off, I have, I'm absolutely against changing the ordinance in any way, shape, or form. The ordinance we passed years ago is nationally recognized, and there's no need to change it. I don't care what anybody says. I'm going to fight that battle to the utter end. And so there, that's one of my things. I said that to Mr. Najarian last night. You'll see me there tomorrow night. He's, "We've got something in common." You know, I said, "You mean we're common law?" And he said, "Shut up. What kind of thing are you saying here?" But anyway, he knows what I'm saying. I'm not going to give up on it. As far as something that we should really think about are the homeless people that stand outside over here in front of the armory. A lot of you, I know, we all go home to our nice warm beds and our hot meals in our families. Those people are out there, and as I said, I have gone there, I have helped serve the meals and have taken clothing. Those guys need socks, underwear, towels, and soap, because they can have showers there. They have showers, and it's wonderful. They really feel that it's wonderful that they can do that. And if we take things, like I do, I just take plastic bags full of, you know, the clothing, the socks, whatever I can get from anybody, I take there, and they're so grateful. They really are. It's something that we take for granted, clean clothes or having a shower, but for them, that's a treat. Please think about them in the really cold weather that they're standing out there and with not enough clothing. You know, some of them have very light clothing. I like a lot of Californians. So I would appreciate it, and I think they would very much, thinking about them as you crawl into your nice warm bed, that you don't have to stand out in a line. And then share the room with, what, 100 other people? Something else. And I do want to appreciate you letting me speak, and of course, I have my opinions, as usual. One of my problems is the gentleman with the parking that was here. I have no property in that area. It's unbelievable. There's never a parking space at all. When I go over there, I have to park illegally in the back of my property across the tenants' parking, and a lot of the parking in the daytime is taken up by the auto dealers' employees. I know, because I go and I sit and I watch, and I watch where they go. And I understood when those auto dealers were allowed to build those great big parking structures and everything, that the, their employees were to park in those structures and not on the street, because there isn't. That area is over 100 years old, and there just isn't parking in those apartments and that. You're lucky if you have four spaces for, and there are eight people in the building. So I'm just saying that something about the auto dealers, I'm sorry, I know you're saying they're moneymakers, but the quality of life for the people in that area is really not good, because they, not only for their company coming, that even the tenants cannot park there, because there's only, you know, one parking space on my property for each apartment. Thank you very much. Appreciate your listening.
Alan Kachatorian, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, neighbors. My name is Alan Kachatorian. I'm a local business owner and a longtime resident of the city of Glendale. I grew up in Glendale, attended the local schools from elementary to graduating from high school here. Since then, I've been offering my smoke check services to the city. Some of you may know me. I'd like to take this limited time granted to me in front of this council and neighbors to firmly oppose any city ordinances that would ban the local gun show or infringe any of our First or Second Amendment rights. In 1985, my parents fled the oppression, persecution, and injustice of a totalitarian country to the West for the promise of freedom, justice, and opportunity. I was always told by my father that this country is where free men can be free. When I was finally allowed to become a naturalized citizen, I gave my oath to the Constitution and swore to protect all basic human liberties. I took this oath very dear to my heart, that good men gave the ultimate sacrifice for, so I, my family, and all citizens of this great country could live in a land of liberty and justice. However, I am now concerned that as a society, we are trying to manipulate the principal foundations of this country to coexist with new fears that have plagued our minds. But fears have always been amongst us, one way or another, and we have always triumphed and overcome them, still preserving our essential rights. A wise man once said, "They who can give up essential liberty to obtain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." This man was Benjamin Franklin. I need not tell you the importance of his visions for this country. For our local government to withhold permits, increase fees, or outright ban a lawful business or industry whose main objective is to educate, offer services, and provide tangible items not banned by Congress or Sacramento and protected under the First and Second Amendment of the Constitution to a law-abiding free men who may choose to want them is in every way illegal and unconstitutional. Just as recent as 2010, per McDonald versus Chicago, Supreme Court 561, U.S. 3025, the Supreme Court ruled that the Second Amendment limits state and local governments to the same extent that it limits the federal government. There have been many times where I've walked the aisles of the gun show and have not even bought a single item, yet learned about new products, shared experiences, stressed safety with one another, and made friends that I hold to this day. I would like to take my child down these same aisles one day, to walk down the streets of Glendale and tell him, "This is the land where free men can still be free." As a city, we should not go down the path of tyranny. Let's together reillustrate the importance of the Constitution, passion for liberty, and defend our jewel city from making any illegal and unconstitutional ordinances that would ban our beloved gun show of Glendale. I know my time is short, and there may be some others that would like to voice their concerns, so I'll close on one final request, since I'm on the subject of violating our constitutional rights. The city of Glendale should seriously consider making a statement to the federal government and to Sacramento and the rest of the country that we, as a city, will not accept, enforce, or assist in any federal executive order that is unconstitutional and illegal. If the president happens to bypass the Constitution and bypass Congress and execute an order banning any firearm or having a law-abiding citizen be profiled by a national gun registry, we are allowing him to act as a monarch. We fought a war to rid this land of a king. If this happens, where do we draw the line? And at which point will we still have the power to draw that line? What will stop the executive branch from taking away all our other rights? The consequences of this decision can send our country towards a totalitarian state killing the free republic our forefathers invaded. We are the United States of America. We're not just America, and we deserve to have a say in the issues at hand. As creators of the federal government, nullification is a right guaranteed to the states and reemphasized under the Kentucky and Virginia Resolutions of 1798, which were written by then-Vice President Thomas Jefferson and James Madison respectfully. By creating the federal government and giving it rules, the Constitution, the federal government breaks the rules, it breaks the contract between the states and Washington, making its laws null and void. I urge this council to listen to its citizens, use its power, its rights, and press this issue to Sacramento that we will not be tread on. I will end with a quote from George Washington from 1790. "Government is not reason; it is not eloquence; it is force. Like fire, a troublesome servant and a fearful master, never for a moment should it be left to irresponsible action." I thank you for your consideration and your time, and God bless the U.S. Senate.
Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, Mr. Ochoa, my name is Herbert Milano. About seven years ago, there was a lady of about 84 years of age. She was my neighbor. She used to remember all of our kids' birthdays. She used to come over, and oftentimes, if we were not home, would leave a piece of cake or some type of small gift for them. One day, I was arriving at home, and I saw the paramedics attending to someone, and it was Vicky who had been, had fallen on the sidewalk, and she had apparently broken her hip. I took an interest in a couple of things, not just her well-being, but I wondered how often this occurred. So I decided to talk to the, to the paramedic, and I asked him, "How often, on a daily basis, do you pick up an elderly woman or person who has fallen and possibly broken the hip?" At the time, he said there were about three per day. So I took an interest to figure out, well, how extensive is the problem with broken sidewalks in Glendale? And it turns out that it was pretty significant, that it actually takes up to 12 years in the schedule that you have to actually fix sidewalks. And I began to wonder just how many people in Glendale, elderly, who trip and fall, suffer a broken hip, wind up at the hospital, catch a contagious disease, and die. I looked at the statistics and found out that about 60% die within one year. So I came before the city council, I spoke about the broken sidewalks, and I basically was told that there was this particularly long schedule, but there was no money available for it. And that theme that there is no money available kept recurring, again and again. When my daughter was small, I remember, we used to, we lived not too far from here, about four blocks away, and I used to drive all the way to Glen Oaks Canyon, to Glen Oaks Park. It was probably what I consider one of the nicest parks in the city, close to where Mr. Weaver lives. And we thought there was a, that park had everything that you could want of a small park. You know, you have barbecue areas, you have a basketball area, the kids could play volleyball, there was area to play some soccer. It was a small community room, and I began to wonder, why isn't it that we don't have the same type of facilities south of the 134 freeway? So I started this inquiry, and I wound up finding this amazing document printed in 2001, a group of blue-ribbon individuals, which included Mr. Quintero and one of the current board members of the GUSD, talking about the deficiency of parkland in South Glendale. When I talked about to the city council during the time, why isn't that we don't invest so significantly in parkland? Well, there's no money. And as I began to study the financial statements of the city of Glendale, I began to realize what an amazing surprise to find out that the pension obligation of the city went from $600 million to over $1.3 billion in a very short period of time, 11 years. That the obligation that we have to pay for the pensions, incredibly luxurious pensions, did not allow the city to even maintain its basic infrastructure. No money for parks, of significant consequence, not enough money for the subterranean or the water lines, not enough money to maintain the water utility properly or the electric utility properly, hundreds of millions of dollars in arrears. So I was wondering, where is the conscience and what is the purpose of a city council if it is not to attend to the needs and create a quality of life? So I began asking about quality of life indicators. I come here, and then I get dissed for asking or expecting that a city would look at quality of life indicators and address them and plan for it. So I realized that politics is about who gets what, who gets the money and where is it distributed. But it is my belief that it really isn't going directly to where the needs are. It's primarily going to special interests. And so after trying to convince and support candidates for office, several of you that I supported in the past, they find that there is no solution, I decided this time to run for office once again and put 100% of my effort to correct this problem, and hopefully we'll get the quality of life that we all deserve. Thank you.
Hey, that's a final card. Comment, everyone? Mr. Menuchyan?
I just want to say, I just want to thank everyone for coming, those who spoke and those who did not speak. I respect your opinion on this issue with the gun sales across the street from the school, from the college. It will be discussed next week. I hope you will come again, and we'll discuss it then. Thank you very much for coming.
The Congress? Do you have a motion? On the business sweep?
I'd like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of McKeon and Harbor to represent the interests of the city of Glendale at all in the matter of Tigan Tobodzikian versus the city of Glendale et al., case number CV10-0387-JGB-SS. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a budget and fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Roll call. Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Move we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.